This is February 1st and we are in our third session of budget going through Kate's budget here. And I want to thank our audience. Tonight, we have Jack Davis with us. And I want to thank everybody that is watching, and I mostly want to thank Kate and Jen. And I want to thank them, especially Kate, who's worked on this so hard, and Jen, and has made our life, in a way, more difficult. Because when you start looking for $40 in office supply savings, we know that it's going to be really hard for us to fine tune this budget. So, thank you for all of your hard work. Jen, thank you. And Kate?
Well, let me in turn thank the department heads who put the budgets together because they make my job difficult. And you've seen through here, as you go through, the level of detail that people provide you on the various accounts, and they work very hard. Some of them start, you know, September, October, putting together their budgets, and they work very hard on it. So, I want to give them credit. So, tonight, we're in the Fire and Emergency Services. So, the first one up, you know, we have Fire Marshal first. So, this budget includes moving one part-time deputy fire marshal to full-time as of January 1. This is part of what we've been going through with the growth in the number of residential units, I should say, units of housing in multi-unit dwellings, where they have to inspect each one of those units every year. So, this is some, that part-time going to full-time in January is somewhat tied to the creation of a full-time emergency management director, which is in a different budget, one we would do next. If we don't go forward with the EMD, then I think we should move the deputy fire marshal to full-time in July because of the volume of work they're going to face. And I did, I had, part of the questions that I asked Bobby when we were doing their budget was, you know, if we hire the full-time emergency management director, can we put off hiring, you know, moving another person up to full-time in that office? And the answer was no. When you look at the statistics, we're going to need that position. And we should expect that we'll probably, if things go as we anticipate, there'll be another ask in fiscal '25 because there are that many units being added. So, that's, and if you do approve the EMD, we need to move funds back from the, where the deputy, the assistant fire marshal is right now split. We would need to move that back. So, there's a lot all around whether or not you're going to approve that position. So, getting into the details there. Other than that piece, there's not a whole lot of change here. It's all dependent on that one thing. The overtime salary, this does show a move, you know, an increase there. Looking at the deputy fire marshal is doing more of the inspections and firework, investigations, sorry, and fireworks, things that happen outside normal office hours. And assuming that they would choose overtime rather than compensatory time for doing that work. As with other budgets, we've been moving the training conference amounts to the appropriate places. I've got to move my own columns here. So, that's why you see a shift there. But also in there, you know, adding the next full-time deputy fire marshal means more training because they're required to get 90 hours of continuing education every three years to maintain their certification.
So, Kate, that's all baked into these numbers, all the?
That's, some of it is moving things between conferences and training services. So, there's still a little overall, a little bit more. But we're adding, by adding the third deputy fire marshal, we are adding more training hours.
Okay. And that's all in these numbers?
That's all in those numbers, yes. And then doing professional licenses, same thing, adding a third full-time to some of the memberships. On the good news, he did say, in some instances, they get better prices for having multiple members. So, equipment repair is up, assuming that we provide them with another vehicle that increases for car washes for all the vehicles. And then you see the rest of it is static. If we go to their revenues, you're going to see a drop. And the drop is because, this is one of those things that's a leading indicator. The revenues here come up before the building starts. So, as the majority of the building permits for the big development projects have already been paid in '22 and '23, we're anticipating a drop in their revenues. Now, some of the other things that are proposed come up, you know, that might come up, come back up. I did ask town council to look into the possibility of a new fee to discourage the contractors who call them out for inspections before they're actually ready to have the work inspected. So, I don't know where that will go, but I looked around at other communities to see if any of them had any inspection fees or something like that. I only saw one that had something like that. They had a missed inspection fee. And I didn't see anything specifically in the statutes, but it could be hard to find, so.
Kate, how often is that happening? I know we talk about it in the day, but?
I got the impression that it's been happening quite a bit.
Well, maybe we need to put the missed inspection fee in place before the summer hits?
Well, the thing is knowing whether or not we're allowed to, whether it's legal to do so.
Or they call someone out for an inspection if they're not ready?
I don't know if it's legal for us to charge for that, so.
I'm sorry, is the problem with missed inspections or repeated inspections?
The problem is, they're calling the fire marshal out when the work is not 100% complete, and they can't inspect it if it's not 100% complete. So, they're calling them out and saying, "We're ready." And they get there and they're not ready, clearly not ready.
Consider the missed inspection fee, could we have a graduated fee schedule? It says inspection number two is more expensive.
Well, that's what we would like to have, so we're just asking, because a lot of those fees are heavily regulated by the state. So, I'm asking town council to determine if that would be legal for us to do. If it's legal for us to do, we'll get on it.
Well, I'd be supportive just because it's a corrective. It's not meant as a punishment.
It's a big time draw. We don't have enough staff to be?
Well, yeah, exactly, exactly. Moving to their capital, there's just the one item, well, it's two items technically, but it's a vehicle and then upfitting the vehicle. So, $64,000 for the vehicle and then another $13,000 for the radios.
And that, Kate, I just, I remember the car for building was like $35,000, and this is, what, $64,000, I think?
Sure, because the car for building only needs to be like a small car to go around town. They don't need to carry a lot of equipment. The fire marshals need to carry quite a bit of equipment.
Like a Tahoe or something?
Yeah, right now, we have pickups with cabs on the back. But we have done things like the big Tahos in the past.
What's a good point to talk about, radio repair expenses?
Anytime you want.
About what, sir?
The radio repair expenses?
We have a lot of radios.
We have a lot of radio repair expenses?
Mm-hmm.
Year after year after year?
Yes.
If this purchase of $13,000 of new radios, what is that anticipated to reduce the radio repair? Because in our budget this year, I added up just the radio repair expenses, it's almost $170,000.
Yeah, I understand we have, we should have 51 police officers. Right now, we don't, but they all have to have radios on their body in the car.
It's not just police, it's fire, it's everybody.
It's all the volunteer fire, so they each have a radio when, you know, going into, and the fire marshals, and the highway department. They have radios in the vehicles.
Yes, they do.
Yes. We have a lot of radios.
It's a lifetime on a radio.
You know, it varies. Some of them, they get abused, depending on the nature of them. But I'd have to ask what the actual?
So, Kate, on the, on this vehicle, so on this, this, this new FT or this reconfiguration, so $77,000 additional in capital for this, that doesn't change no matter what you're thinking, right?
No.
We'll still need this, right?
Just when we would need it.
Okay, okay. Okay.
So?
The vehicle that this is replacing?
It's not replacing. This would be an additional vehicle.
It's an additional, okay. For the hopefully new position?
Yes, and because, you know, they, they're not in a position where they can share vehicles, you know, when they need to go out, and because of the equipment they have to carry, you can't anticipate that they have a personal vehicle that could carry it.
And Kate, we wouldn't look at an EV for this, right?
Um, I'm not sure that any EVs have the, you know, where they'd be able to get, you know, put the equipment in there, the, you know, the meters and the turnout gear and, you know, stuff like that. I don't know that there'd be any that would. I think the electric vehicles would be ideal for the, our inspectors. You know, building inspector, planning department, anybody that's going around town, just on a regular basis. Did have discussion with the chief about it because I think Westport has gotten some electric vehicles. And his comment was they go too fast.
Really?
Yeah.
They can go very fast.
They drive too fast? Yeah, they can go, they can go from zero to whatever.
There's no pickup. You just go that speed.
Yeah. But we do, I really do want us to try and, you know, get into that, especially for the ones that just go around town. I think it'd be a great way to do it.
Kate, they, the fire marshals, they inspect these apartments every year?
They have to inspect them every year.
Okay.
Each one every year.
And is there a fee every year for that service?
No.
Okay.
So, then, emergency management. This is where, as I said before, we, based on the emergency services study, this is where proposed new full-time position for an emergency management director would be. And if this was approved, there's about $60,000 that would go back to be put in the fire marshal's budget. One of the recommendations from the study was also that we should have an administrator for the fire departments. And they basically said, you know, assign it to the fire marshal or alternatively to this full-time EMD if you create it. I do think we need somebody, we need to do something. The volunteers do the best. Some of them do a fantastic job. Some of them, a less fantastic job in terms of the administration. It can be difficult to manage. We've had some things happen, like one department went ahead and hired somebody to do a project that should have been bid without our knowing until it was too late. They also had been going out and bidding a rather large project. And when they found out how much it was, they said, "Oh, you know, we have a problem here." And I'm like, "Yeah, you have a big problem because, you know, needs to be..." So, we need a little bit more oversight and somebody who could be more involved in controlling, making sure the paperwork gets processed on time, making sure things like their training gets recorded. You know, if you've started going through the big study, one of the areas where we are weak is the actual recording of the training and some record-keeping as it pertains to who's on duty. And we need somebody to help with that, which a fire administrator could do. My thought would be if we do go ahead with emergency management director, that that person be responsible for those things. And Jen and I have talked about different ways to manage this thing. You know, we're talking about budgets here that total around $800,000 between three fire departments and the fire commission. It's a lot of money with nobody responsible to the administration for that. You know, nobody that, if they're consistently failing to get purchase orders or like going out to, you know, engaging a contractor when they haven't gone out to bid, there's nobody that I can ding and review, you know? And there's no board that would oversee them and say, "You need to be responsible." So, you know, we've talked about different ways we could do it. One thought we had was, you know what? Give them the $800,000, put the fire commission in charge of it in a similar way to the libraries in charge of their money, and say, "Here you go. That's what you're getting. That's all you're getting, and you manage it." Not ideal, but it's one approach. And I think when we went, I don't know, five years ago, to having the town pay more of their expenses directly and eliminating the grants that were just kind of nebulous, we haven't gotten the efficiencies out of that that we thought we would. So, yeah.
Are you suggesting two different positions? One to manage, or you feel like the emergency management director position would be able to do that?
I think you could go two ways. You could add the duties to the fire marshal. That would mean, I believe, likely an increase in pay or grade for him because of the additional duties. Also, that would mean he'd have less time to be fire marshal. So, you'd have to deal with that work. I feel we are not giving the emergency management the attention it needs because it's divided in half with the fire marshal duties. So, I do think we need that position. I'm not completely convinced that it needs to, just emergency management by itself is a full-time, 12-month job here. That's why I think the fire administrator duties would fit better under that.
Under the emergency?
Kate, do you think that the fire marshal has the, kind of the background to also do this type of work?
Yes, yeah, the fire marshal, yeah. He absolutely does.
Okay, so this kind of?
The question is, where's, you know, where's the best use of our resources?
Right, you know, it's a lot of administration, right?
Yes.
Right, okay.
So, lots of things for you to think about and ponder over.
Okay.
And you have a weekend and plus a day.
You know what, and all four, it's $888,000, so it's, you know?
Yeah. So, outside of that personnel, the rest of this budget is kind of unremarkable. There's not, there's not a lot of change here. Some radio repair, wireless communications, that's for the modems that run the message boards that we have. And you see the heating fuel down. I cut that simply because it's one of those, just in case we need diesel fuel or the heating fuel. Rarely used, so I knocked it down to $100. And there's no capital associated, no revenue associated with this. Okay, so, we'll start into the three fire departments, starting with Darian. So, just, you know, as kind of an overview, I tried to keep all their increases in the same neighborhood dollar-wise. The percentages are a little bit different. They're all above the average of the, you know, the budget. But I tried to keep them, you know, equal as much as I could. And with all of them, I tried to fund all their training and equipment requests as much as possible. In Darian, there's a slight increase in professional services. That's where they pay for their accounting. And I looked at what they'd spent this year and previous years, so I felt the increase was reasonable. Same thing with the equipment repair. Looking at their history, the increase, even though it's 9%, it appeared to be reasonable. Utilities are up as they are all over the place.
Is equipment repair, is that on the vehicles too?
That's on the vehicles, yeah.
That's high.
Yeah, but?
Radios.
Yeah, they're, you know, in?
Two, seven?
Their chief is actually the town mechanic. So, he has a very good handle on their equipment repair. And they actually, I don't know if they're the biggest department, but they have the smallest town budget. The turnout gear, you know, they laid out for us what they're, and you could look at the detail, what they're, what they're buying. So, I tried to fund all those as much as possible. Would you like to go through the operating for each of the departments first or go to like operating and capital on each one?
I'd do operating for everybody, and then we have an integrated capital discussion.
So, then we'll go to Narotin. And we're seeing the same kind of thing there. Their equipment repairs up. And, you know, looking at the historic numbers, that appeared to be reasonable. Facility repair was up. I reduced the rate of increase, is how I'll put it, because I didn't feel it was justified, but it's still up 3%. And again, the utilities are up. They have not converted to natural gas yet. That's an ongoing project. That's an issue with the cost. And then Narotin Heights.
Was Narotin Heights the one who changed their meters?
Yeah, so, one of the things that came out when we were meeting with them to discuss the budget, they changed one of the types of meters they had. And I really appreciate what they looked at. They had a different type than the other departments had. And it was expensive for them to get theirs calibrated. But I believe Narotin has it calibrated. Narotin and Darian both had calibrated. So, Narotin Heights changed their meter so that they could match the other departments and use the calibration equipment that was already in place rather than having to send those out all the time, which I felt was pretty good. So, one of the increases we have here in professional services, you see percentage-wise, it looks pretty big. They asked to have additional funding for mental health therapy sessions. There is, in the fire commission budget, an EAP for the firefighters that provides three therapy sessions. They felt there was a need for more, so they asked for an additional $1,150 for that, which I supported. Snow removal, yeah, I didn't think that we're going to get as much as they did. They are being, trying to be proactive to, you know, put stuff down before the snow ice happens. So, increased it a little bit, but history hasn't shown the need for as much as they asked for, so I didn't fund that all. And then again, their equipment repair, you know, they've laid out what they're looking for here, and it looked reasonable based on history. And utilities are up. Tires, they're replacing very specific tires. One of their engines, they are replacing the tires on that, so that's why it's up significantly. Okay, go to their capital. So, Darian asked for a couple of things. The main one that I put forward was the exhaust mitigation system. So, you've probably all been in one of the firehouses and you see the big hose that connects to the exhaust to draw the exhaust out. It's a safety issue. And the current system repairs are exceeding the cost of replacement, so they would like to replace it. And I support that.
That's like from the field?
From the trucks, yeah. Then Narotin. Narotin has a couple of pieces of equipment for emergencies. Struts, two vehicle stabilization struts. Their current struts are nearing the end of their useful life, and they would like to replace them. I think it's a safety issue, so I support that. They are looking to replace their gas meter calibration system. And again, this is, you know, able to be used by others. This one is at the end of its useful life. Rather than spend the money on repairs, I support purchasing the new one. Then the other things that they have there are ongoing radios and SCBA. Now, they have not been able to replace their SCBA for the last several years. And this is where?
Yeah, what is?
Self-contained apparatus, sorry.
Just not the underwater?
Pardon?
It's the same as scuba, just?
It's, yeah, without the underwater, yes. So, it's pretty, it's a pretty big number. And this is one of those things where, you know, not all the departments have the same equipment. So, they're waiting on a specific type of device to be available. So, they've got last year's and the year before's allotment still waiting.
Is it a supply and demand issue?
Yes, yes. The other departments have chosen to go with a different product, so they haven't had the same issue. But I just wanted to call that to your attention because you see the balance that built up. When I saw the requests come in this year, I said, you know, "Do you not realize you have all this still?" And they did. So, they are, they are behind. And, you know, it could, I think it could be a problem for some other board of selectmen, you know, 10, 15 years down the road, where all of a sudden, they'll have to replace a lot at one time because they haven't been able to replace them in chunks every year.
Kate, does the emergency study address any of this?
Yes. One of the things it talks about is, there are two things it talks about. And that, purchasing together to purchase like equipment that they should all, they should meet and decide on equipment and all use the same. And also using some of the grants that are available, applying for some of the grants that are available from the federal government to purchase this kind of equipment.
But they would still need to buy this, according to this study?
They need these.
Okay.
But, you know, the issue would be, you know?
Who's paying for it?
Who's paying for it, yeah.
Is there a particular reason why they've gone for this vendor when the other ones have not?
It's not the vendor, it's the, it's the style.
Okay.
Okay. I think?
The report kind of wants things more standardized, correct?
It recommends that things be more standardized, yeah. I believe it has to do with the weight, if I recall correctly. If I can find the? Looks like it didn't write it down, but my recollection was that it had to do with the weight. The last one, the heights. So, there's an important one in here. Have you all ever been to the back of the heights? Okay. The retaining wall. I probably should?
It's a big retaining wall.
It's a big retaining wall. It's a big retaining wall. Let me go back to the descriptions. When we met with them, we actually pulled the map and area photos up here so we could look at where exactly it was. So the retaining wall needs to be reinforced. It's crumbling. And it could collapse. And actually, one of the things that if it collapses, not only like does the parking area above, but it could also take out a portion of the road. And I did verify that with, with Ed. He said, you know, it's not like it's going to take half the road, but it could impact the road. So I think it's something that we need to, we need to do.
Will that resolve the problem as opposed to replacing the retaining wall? And just reinforcing it or does that only take care of the problem for a couple of years?
No, they'd be removing and replacing it.
Okay.
And Kate, is this the, does this affect, if you're looking at the building, is it on the right-hand side?
If you're facing the building, it's on the left-hand side.
Okay, I was gonna say, because it, would it affect access to McGowan and so forth?
No. And that, that side was done a number of years ago.
Okay, got it.
So this is a side more like to the, to the VFW.
Yeah, okay.
And you can actually, if you go over there, you can see where there have been some, what do you call it? You know, cracks and damage already.
So Kate, where did they get the quote for that?
They had a vendor come out and evaluate it. And I. I don't remember if they sent us a copy of the quote.
Kate, the bottom of this, really quickly, just, the bottom of this form says revised 10/30/2020. This isn't from 10/20?
That's the form.
This is just the form? Okay, sorry, just needed to make sure.
Yeah.
Could the quote actually be much, much higher?
No, that was the form.
Just wanted to make sure.
So the other stuff they have there is portable radios and SCBA for them as well. Going back to operating to the fire commission.
Kate, before we do that.
Yeah.
On the, on the fire, on the three fire departments, you know, in the commentary, I think it would be really helpful if they were consistent. So they're consistent. Yeah, this, this is really hard to follow. They're, you know, they're consistent on their performance measures, but they don't all consistently fill the numbers in. And then on the call type, you know, I understand, you know, they have different expertise in different areas, but still, this, this could, this, this could be really helpful for us and this is really not very complete. I feel like you maybe have mentioned this already to someone, yeah.
It's, you know, one of the things when you're dealing with the departments is there's turnover in who's doing these things. And sometimes you get somebody who's really good at it and has an interest in it. And sometimes, you know, it's just not the most important thing to them. And I have some sympathy for them because they're volunteers. And they're doing this, I mean, just like you are doing this on top of your normalized, they're doing that on top of their normalized. So I have some sympathy, but we've tried.
Is this something that this new admin person would fill out?
I think we could, yeah.
Include that in?
Yeah.
Mean the emergency management director?
Yeah. It, because it is useful information. And, you know, it's one of the things you see when, when you look at the, the number of calls of a certain kind. You know. It informs you on, you know, what equipment do they need? So. And I think you're right about not having the same categories wouldn't, you know, it doesn't tell you. You know, like just this one picking up, you've got severe weather, natural disaster, false alarm, false calls, or rescue and emergency medical service. Well, what if, you know, the 16 in 2019 were, was one rescue and 15 emergency medical service? You know, it might change how you view things, so.
It would be helpful, though, if we could just look at all three on one sheet too. Even if it's, you know, I did it myself adding up the calls overall, but. And they, I, I think Heights and, I think Darrian has 75 volunteers and Heights and Narotin have 40 to 50, right?
I don't know. I thought they were actually pretty equal in the numbers of volunteers, but I haven't asked that kind of question in a while. I think it's in the study.
I think it is. Maybe that's where.
Yeah. Okay. The fire commission, there's a couple of new things here. Not new line items, but that I want to point out though, but that I think are important. And again, you're just seeing the effect of the growth. So the training services. A number of years ago, we put all the firefighter one, the basic training that they need onto the auspices of the fire commission. In this budget, they've asked for two new classes, two new types of training. One for elevator emergencies and one for electric vehicle emergencies. We're going to have a lot more elevators in town with the new developments, multi-story developments, so it's important that they get trained on how to deal with those. And then electrical vehicles. They are a different animal to, to deal with. So they, you know.
They need special equipment, don't they?
They need special equipment and, you know, there are just different dangers around them. So, you know, my husband has said, well, if we ever get an electric vehicle, we won't put it in the garage unless we have a snuff blanket.
Right.
So like, okay. You know, it's.
They burn hotter.
They burn hotter, they, they're harder to put out.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, I support that. I think that is, that's important. We need our firefighters to be well-trained. So their dues looks like a pretty big increase and we questioned that, but that is, it's no new organization. That's just what the dues are, are going up to. Professional services, you know, everything in here was up a little bit. This is where we have the employee assistant program. They have some money here for recruitment for new members. This is also where we do some of the testing of the equipment that goes across the, all the departments. They manage the testing. They bring in one vendor to test the devices, the ladders, the pumps. Medical services, this is the physicals for the firefighters. It's up slightly. Again, it's important that we do that.
And this is for all of them?
This is for all three departments. You know, one of the things that we, I'm not comfortable with is that we don't get reports showing who's had their physicals. So.
Like an annual requirement?
Mm-hmm. And it's not just the standard physical that you or I would have.
Yeah.
And things like the fit, the fit test for the masks, those, those are all important to have. And we should have documentation here showing that it's all been done. Other than that, you know, facility repair is up a little bit. Utilities are up everywhere. Emergency communications is the cost for C-MED and that's their estimate. They did ask for a tremendous increase in office supplies. And I, I, I said, okay. Break up $40 from somebody else. I let them have it. They said they've been, you know, bringing things from home, so. So that was, that was all there. In terms of capital for them. There are some things that I. They want to continue to expand the concrete pad. That was the one I, I didn't fund because of the, felt the, the other things were more important. So there is steelwork inside the drill tower. They have stairs and various openings. And we had a, we had Karma, our insurance company, come out and do ocean inspections of the different firehouses. Not by OSHA, but in preparation to see what, you know, if we, they came in, what they might find. And in doing that, they, they highlighted a concern for the safety of the stairs inside the tower. Their, their weakness is there and they need to be, they need to be repaired. So I thought that was an important one to do.
We spent a lot of money on the drill tower.
Yes.
A few years ago. Can you refresh me as to what, when that was?
We, when it was? It was probably like four or five years ago. We added basically another area to it for simulators. And I'm trying to think back now.
But not what we're talking about was replaced with all that?
This is, no, that's not what we're talking about.
Right, okay.
We bought a car, that, that's outside. Yeah. The other thing that I put forward is a security system. They've noted a lot of illegal dumping on the grounds and trespassers. And so they're looking to put in a security system to try and eliminate them.
Kate, how many years have we put off that concrete pad?
I think this is at least a second.
At least.
Yeah. But there is also a lot of, we put some things into ARPA. And I, I do think we're going to have some reallocation of funds from projects that aren't going to go forward or are going to cost more than what we had allocated under ARPA. So that we might want to look at a different funding source. And so there are some capital projects that I think, you know, maybe we're not putting in this budget that we could look to fund out of that if we want them.
So is that half, half complete?
Concrete, the, the concrete pad, it's not that it's half complete. They want to expand it. They want to, you know, have more room for it.
I wrote 75% complete when this phase is done.
Because they've been trying to expand it in phases.
Right.
Which is, I, you know, I felt the other two were more important to move on. And I think the town, the, on the sheet. It's got 80,000.
No, that was me. I bet I flip flopped.
Okay.
Kate, when we look at the report that came out, it's 160 pages without pulling it out and going, okay, what do we need to add? What are some major things that maybe from their recommendations that maybe we don't have in our budget this year? I mean, I know the, the emergency management director and that was a big one.
That's the, that one. There's some things that are not budgetary.
Right, of course.
Or would.
Like the fire commission or, I'm just thinking budgetary, financial related.
Some of the training, they talk about more officer training. So, you know, there's different levels of training. So there's like a firefighter one, a firefighter two, then there's an officer instructor. So they're recommending that we have more officer level training. That's not a large expense, depending on how you go about it. We could have classes here. It's something, you know, it's maybe like 400 a person. So if you had it here, you know, looking at say a $500, $5,000 class possibly.
But it's not, you know, it's not another truck. It's not.
It's not another truck, no. No, it's not.
$5,000 we can handle, but yeah.
Some of the, some of the things were actually, you know, potential for savings or for using grants to pay for things.
And some standardization.
Some standardization which, you know, could save us money. I sent around today a draft of the decision chart that John had asked for. So one of the columns in that is whether there's costs. So I tried to, like if I knew what a cost would be, put that actual cost in there. Or if I felt it was going to cost money, but I didn't know.
Oh, on that report?
On that report.
Yeah, we need to.
Send it to her.
Yeah. It's a lot in there.
Yeah, but this is just a.
No, I think it's great.
The one that I sent, you, you would have gotten it late this afternoon. In fact, I said, you don't need to read it for tonight. But that will indicate to you where, you know, where the cost might be.
Okay, thank you.
The last one tonight is EMS.
Can I ask some questions on the fire before we go EMS?
Should.
Okay. I'll send them to you as I did today. But first one, aren't we expecting two more fire engines either this year or next year?
So Darrian has one on water. Right? And then the Heights is asking for a pumper that should be coming to the board next week.
Okay, so that would also go for finance and.
Yes.
I know they were working on that. How, how is the impressed, the small capital working? Because I know we set that up as a single number. I'm just curious, you don't have to answer.
Yeah, I think it's worked well. We haven't heard any complaints.
Okay.
The standard $5,000 has worked.
Worked, worked well. Fire lawn funds, what they offer for the current year, what we're anticipating for the next year. What has been expended out of that on the commission is of interest to me. And I know this is just, have we had an opportunity to get the fence up yet? Or are they still, I know that there's some costs and other things like that on that capital. Wasn't up last year when we did the inspection. Yeah. And I didn't know if they were still waiting for some other things. They have had problems finding somebody even willing to do it.
Did we approve a fence last year? I can't remember.
You approved it years ago.
Did we? Okay.
Yeah.
That would help with security.
It would help. It's, it's not the fence, it's not, that's.
Not the deterrent, yeah.
It's the other areas where people can get involved.
Right. And.
If we electrify it, I think.
And you can just, just add a key to what we were at the ease. Just if I'm, I mean, I do know that that retaining wall doesn't even work. But am I incorrect to assume that part of the exit ramp from the Narotin firehouse also has like a little bridge that goes over there also that's somewhat attached to the.
You're talking about the Heights. It's, so if you're standing in front of the Heights firehouse.
Right.
This is not part of the bridge.
Okay.
This is to the left.
All right, I know exactly what you're talking about, okay.
It's kind of like retaining wall, bridge, retaining wall.
Okay.
And I'm sure there's a retaining wall under the bridge as well.
Right, yeah. That's why I was just wondering whether or not that retaining wall would be also part of the project. Okay.
EMS. So the big number here is for the paramedics. We're increasing our estimated cost. Jen does a calculation based on what our experience has been. And then what our obligation is to SEMS, Stanford Emergency Medical Service. So just to refresh you. The contract with SEMS requires that we, that they receive a certain amount of compensation every year. How they get it is from billing and from us. So the volume of calls can have an impact. And the volume of uninsured or underinsured patients would have an impact. So we basically pay what they cannot collect from the patients.
That's been true for a long time. Are there any adverse trends in terms of?
Well, during, during the pandemic, yeah. The numbers actually, our cost went up.
Didn't we decide to start doing collections on those though? Didn't we just start to start actively collecting more on some of those?
We don't do the collections. We used to.
I thought we did.
Years ago, we did after the post would bill. Years ago, we did, after the post would bill, we would bill. We would, you know, we would, they would bring us all the uncollectibles and we, we paid the post, reimbursed the post for those. And then we would go after those. But when we moved to this agreement with, with SEMS, that's, they managed all the billing.
Well, actually it's Post 53 that does the billing.
Oh, okay.
It's not SEMS.
A len is part of the post.
Well, I did bill it. What trend, if I could just ask, that you're talking about collections, have you seen in the collection rate, like versus what's billed? Do you know what I mean?
I couldn't tell you because I don't know what's billed versus collected. We don't get that from Post 53. We just get the amount actually collected, but we don't know what was billed.
That would be helpful information.
It's not good is the answer.
And that was after we did the more aggressive.
There's no, nothing's going to collections.
We haven't done that in a long time.
No, I mean, it's, it's not an easy choice to decide that you want to do that. But there are plenty of insurance cases where there's, the collection is zero. It's not just uninsured.
Most insurance companies don't cover any bill, right?
So Kate or Jen, so we, we basically would pay a minimum on this, right? So we're giving them a floor, right?
No, they're guaranteed through the billing and through us that they will receive a certain dollar amount.
Right.
So basically we pay what they don't receive through billing. So if the unpaid bills are not being pursued beyond the first attempt, we might be able to reduce our obligation if we pursue them further.
Yeah, the whole problem with this is that they're not really incentivized to collect these bills. So they might reach out once or whether they can forget it because they're guaranteed, excuse me, they're guaranteed to get what they're total billing. Listen, we've, we fiddled with this for years and haven't really.
There have been years when members of the Board of Finance rewrote the, the language on the, you know, the bills and the second, you know, second notice and stuff. And then we had staff continuing to go after. So, you know, we'll take a look at what's going on and see if there's anything that is appropriate for us to do as the town.
It resets to zero every year, right?
Yes.
The one thing we might do just from the discussion is start to get a lot better information about what the billings are, what the collections are, all of that. Let's look at that data. And, and I, I could put up with a reasonable amount of non-collections. I mean, but, but if it's significant or people just don't care or there's a word in the community that, look, this is free, you know, they're not going to chase after you or whatever, that, that needs to be stamped out.
Well, the other question is, it may be that we don't have the volume of billing to cover what we have promised to Stanford. So even if they were at 100% collection, we'd still be paying Stanford something.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, but what we're hearing is.
Covid, right?
Yes.
It's what went up because there weren't as many.
Right.
Calls, but we were still obligated to.
To provide the.
Fund them for work that they didn't have to do.
Well, you know, but they're, they're here 24/7.
Right. This, this, we ought to strategize about what information we need, but this is worth a closer look.
Yeah.
And I think in the past, we did have a discussion with, there was a philosophical discussion of, do we go after residents with collection notices? And there was some hesitancy.
Yes, there has been.
To do that. And go ahead to be more aggressive with non-residents, but treating residents.
No, you're, you're accurate. We had these conversations.
Do, do you think residents understand that this is actually, this is not free?
No.
I mean, is, are we doing a good enough job in that regard?
Well, it, it'd be helpful to actually see what, what the bills look like these days because I think sometimes there is a perception that it's an error because the post is a voluntary organization and there's not supposed to be a bill. And they don't realize that they're being billed for the paramedic.
Or that they assume that their insurance company.
Has paid, yeah.
Yep, yeah.
People don't understand how insurance works. They think often that, that, that because it applies to their deductible, like they still owe it. Right? You know, this went to your deductible. It's covered, but you owe it because that's what a deductible is.
Because you haven't met your deductible yet.
Understand what that means. And so they don't pay. Just saying, they don't pay.
So I think maybe we take a look at this.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's just get some facts and start with that.
Yeah.
The post is a group of volunteers and they have zero incentive to be mean to anybody on the phone.
The next week they're calling them for donations.
That's exactly, that's exactly what I'm saying. Like I had some of these conversations and then I realized this is ridiculous because these people will not donate to us. And so that's not in post fest's interest to collect.
If we were to have an emergency management director, could that be something that might fall underneath?
I think that might be stretching it a bit far.
Okay.
Right.
Because I think, you know, one of the discussions, part of the philosophical discussion is, if even we, the town, push it too far, does that impact the amount that people are willing to donate to the post?
Correct.
So.
Right.
I think you can all have a.
Right, let's all, let's all think about this.
Okay. All right, what was I, the only other thing I wanted to highlight here was the emergency communications, that's CMed. You see, some of the other things are reductions. That was the other area of increase. That's our CMed. They do the dispatching for the, for the post. They also do the, it's called. While, they provide the instructions while you're on the line waiting for, you know, the, the pre-arrival instructions to the person on the telephone. That's done through CMed. In terms of capital, part of our obligation is to provide a flycar. And so if you thought the car for the fire marshal was expensive, it's $95,000 for the, the flycar. What is this vehicle, I'll tell you what this. Oh, a lot.
Like sirens. Like a mobile little ambulance.
Yeah, not an ambulance, but it has, I'm not sure about the level of equipment, but one of the things it has to do is have the ability to keep the drugs refrigerated.
Okay. So Kate, will they trade this car in for the new car? Will they trade the old car in for the new car?
Oh, I think we would, yeah.
And is this price net of that?
No, I, I don't expect to do this.
Actually, I think that they have an old one that is a backup and the plan would be to shift this.
To the backup. You're right, you're right. This, that would be in the back one, is what would have to.
In these last 10 years, Kate?
That's their estimated life, yeah. So that's all that was on schedule for tonight. Okay.
We can go back over anything you want.
Just thinking about, you know, regarding the post and explaining the billing, could, could we add something, you know, with Molly on the newsletter to assist?
That's a great idea, yeah. Yeah. Oh, you know what? We'll work with Post to perhaps something that.
Yeah, that's great.
That's a great idea. I like that. Thanks, Jer.
So.
Sorry, Kate, maybe what we'll do is we'll do like a little.
Did you know?
Two or three, I did know of this situation, yeah.
No, 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 like.
Did you have to pay?
Call it, did you know?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Monica, did you know? What, I got my.
Yeah, that's, that's great. We could do it there. We could do, you know, I like to highlight volunteers. Maybe we fit that in somewhere. That's a great idea, Jack. Okay. What else we have, Kate?
Just a couple pieces of information. Somebody had asked about contingency and, yeah. Historical.
I did.
Funding. So Jen put together a chart.
Thank you, Jen. Who's in there? Which, okay, hang on.
So it's attached in open gov.
Okay, hang on. I just couldn't get out of, yeah.
That you can see.
I just couldn't get out of the cabinet. Thank you.
Well, we last funded it at 42020. And, here we go.
Oh.
Whoa. How about down the bottom? In the bottom, I'm going to go over there. It's bottom right here, yeah.
Is that a little bit good?
Yeah, okay. And I think on the second tab you put where, where it went.
Yeah, that's the summary. And then this is detail on what we drew it down for.
Thank you, Jen.
Because you need, what, any zone?
Probably. Though it's, I think it's the way it opened.
So the other thing in the parking fund, the question was, there were two questions were asked last night about whether or not bringing the second ranger back would, would they be able to cover their cost in parking tickets? And so I went back and looked at the history. At our high in the pre-pandemic, we were at about $170,000 in parking tickets.
In parking ticket revenue.
In parking ticket revenue.
Was any of that you, Mike?
Ouch.
Not currently.
I put it in.
Not today.
Not today.
I haven't gone to work this week. I've been working for Mom. It's my volunteer job.
Cheap week.
That's okay. But I, I, I did hear that there were a lot of people that were parking at Baker.
Walking.
And walking and not paying. I was talking to the Parks and Rec Commission and they were saying that one of the big problems over there is that folks are doing that. And there's, and there's no signage.
Yeah, there's cars there all the time.
They're talking to the chief about what the, like the appropriate signage would be.
I'm, I'm not convinced that it's, that it's commuters though. Because I see, there's, there's actually one I see almost every morning getting out of her car and walking up Narroton Avenue to a private home. I think it's somebody's.
People use it as an alternate, you know, parking spot for their home.
And then I think you've, you've got a couple other businesses within very close walking distance to the field where I think their employees are parking there.
Are directed to park there.
Yes, rather than parking and taking from there. So I think, I don't think it's commuters, but I think with the right signage, you know, and then we can send the ranger over there to, to help manage it. But, yeah, so, okay, so you can see in 2019, we did $170,000 in tickets. Same thing a couple years before, you know, we were in that range. The increase there from 16 was when we, that was when we increased the parking ticket costs.
What was our parking ticket revenue last year?
Last year, 47.
It's a big jump.
It's a big jump. Well, it was a big drop off. But, and then if you see the numbers above that show what we were doing at $4 a day, how many tickets or how many parkers you had, right? And so how much revenue. So if we went to $5 a day, that's where we'd be.
General fund and parking.
Yeah. So.
Kate, I can't read it from here. Did you raise the monthly too?
I did not. I just did a look at what we would generate at $5 a day based on those numbers. Okay, so, yeah, we used to, kind of forgot how much revenue we used to get off of parking. So I definitely think bringing back a ranger.
Would pay.
It's 23 actual through six months. If so, it looks like it's off the pace.
23, where, I'm sorry.
19405, is that?
That's through six months.
Or it looks like that pace is off of what it was last year.
We've had difficulty, so the parking ranger position is one of the lowest ranking in that union. And we've had difficulty maintaining somebody in that spot. So we actually went back to bringing, instead of sticking, starting with the low guy, we brought in the parking crew leader. So we just filled that. We had somebody accept that position internally today. We have been without a full-time parking ranger for several months. We actually, at one point, we had somebody take the job, was employed by us in, in, you know, learning how to do it. And about two weeks in, somebody from another department left. And our brand new parking ranger.
Moved to that job.
Moved to that job.
We had coaching within, within intra-department.
Yes, yes. Who could blame him?
Just round the town.
And he'd actually started, worked his temp in that department and.
Is that good?
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, I think he'll be a lifer.
Any other questions?
On, on anything or just this?
On budget?
On anything.
Can you just maybe summarize where we are and repeat sort of the totals, the percent change for the Board of Selectmen budget versus last year? Just talk, give a quick total summary.
So if we're looking at, basically, the way I put it was the numbers above the library, it was up 5%. When we take all of them in, I'd have to go back. Because I don't know if I ever wanted to do that number.
And it is thrown off.
It's thrown off by the change in the, how to finance the, the capital on recurring. And I have to apologize, some of it, you know, you could imagine me sitting at home, doing spreadsheets not for public consumption, you know, doing these spreadsheets, just trying to look at numbers.
Because you don't want them to actually see you doing spreadsheets or?
No, because I'm trying to, I'm trying to get these numbers, you know, where I'd like to see them. And I'm, you know, like moving things around and looking at different ways to cut things. And so it was 6%. I believe that's right. But that, you know, that's thrown off by the fact that we have this transfer out here going away.
Well, one thing you could do, I mean, not to create more work, is to restate the prior year to be consistent with how we're doing it this year so that you get them to where they're comparable. So I don't know if there's a.
Yeah, we can do that, yeah.
Do, because then, then all the lines read in a comparable way. And so you could look at the percentages and they're meaningful.
Yeah, I think you had a little spreadsheet last year that kind of summarized.
I will do that, yeah.
That's why the, the Board of Finance spreadsheet we had kind of normalizes all that. You can actually go, and that's probably an easy place to do it. You have to do it all on open gov because this is just to get the high level comparison over year over year correct.
That's the, you're talking about the VLP report or the other one?
Well, the VLP report was the summary. There's the master schedule that, that I set up that pulls all the, I think it's a.
6.4%.
Right, so what I just did was I took this base expenditures, which is last year's budget, and backed out the 1.3 million that we had as a transfer over to our C N R E. So this $3 million of adjustments is what our budget is going up. And that 3 million applied to the restated fiscal '23 is a 6.4% increase. And that, that does include debt service, which is up because of great accident, and HHR.
If we. If you strip out debt, sorry, if you strip out debt service, what's the?
But include the library. But include the library?
Include library, but exclude debt service. Because that's kind of a separate financing and property question as opposed to just operating efficiency.
I feel like 4.7.
Are you guessing?
It's gonna be, yeah.
Well, you gotta back, you gotta back down the base, too.
But you had a little spreadsheet last year that kind of gave that overview.
Would that be difficult to do again this year, Kate?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'm getting like 4.9.
That's with the library.
With the library, yeah.
So it would be higher if you extracted the library because the library was in a.
The library was, their increase is, oh, but I, yeah, their increase is 4.8.
Can I ask a few questions about this budget? How many FTEs are that are new or being added in this budget?
So three as of July, two as of January, so I guess you call that one a one, and then one a half.
Okay.
So total four and a half.
So I don't trust the number that I just got. But I will say the bulk of our increase is in debt service. So overall, our budget is up $3 million. That's this adjustments number here. And debt service is up 2.5 million. So without debt service, the budget's up about 500,000 on a base of about 37 million. But we'll put.
We'll put together a chart.
Yeah, rather than doing it on the fly. But I think when we exclude debt service, it it really is a very different number because it's a huge increase.
And just, you know, in fairness to me, in years when debt service has gone down.
But we.
I don't take credit for it.
No, we religiously include that in the Board of Selectment budget, that, so, no. But that's why having that sheet, just, I mean, the total is meaningful because that's what's going to drive taxes. But each one of those components has a different flavor of explanation in terms of why it is, what it is, and a different level of control, frankly. And so.
Yeah.
We we need to look at both, the total, the impact on the taxpayer, and then the pieces so that it can be explained.
If I might also, because one of the things that we're looking at, and I want to be consistent in how I'm presenting to the town, it's what are the increases to our core business that we had last year, salaries and that, and what's our growth? So, because I think that does a very good job explaining what goes on in some of the increases, like utilities and that that are up, that's core business. Fuel, that's core business. And so when you break those two down, it was very helpful for people to understand where the increases are coming from, doing the same thing on the Board of Ed.
Kate, the three FTEs in July, that would be emergency management and two police?
Yes.
And then where are the other two that are starting in January?
Deputy Fire Marshal going to full-time and Sanitarian in the Health Department going from part-time to full-time. And those, you know, I I think you need to give them all a lot of thought because, as somebody once said, it's like equivalent of a capital project.
Over the life.
When you consider.
Yeah.
The benefits.
Attention.
You know.
Yeah.
The lifetime.
It's a big decision.
It is.
Yeah, I think the analogy was, it was the shuffle, which, if you looked at the total cost of that project funded over the 20-year-life horizon, and then you took two unionized employees, I think it was, what did we say, 60,000, 70,000 or something?
Probably.
Something like that, put in all the benefits, forecast a cost increase, and then compare those on kind of a present value basis. That capital project was equivalent to two of those employees.
Yeah.
It's shocking how big a difference that, or how important that is. And so before you could just routinely hire people and not really think about it, oh, we're just add some staff here and there, solves a problem. The reality is, is those two people were worth the entire shuffle and that was controversial in town and in newspapers for months and months and months.
We're still paying for it.
Well, we would still be paying for two employees.
No, but I just mean, well, yes, but.
Right, I'm I'm not commenting on the.
Yeah, no, 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 I hear what you're saying.
On on the equivalence between that.
A cost, yeah.
And then if that's the case, two employees like that should get just as much scrutiny as the shuffle.
100%.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I think Kate's warning is a good one, we should, we should take that seriously.
Yeah, but also do keep in mind the growth that we are going to.
Yes.
We have experienced already in the grand list. It does have a cost, which is those two coming on in January, proposed to come on in January. Those are because of the increased number of residential units in multifamily dwellings and the increase in restaurants and salon-type facilities that have to be inspected by law.
But to build on that, Kate, because it's one of the questions I didn't have down here, I didn't mention. I think part of it is everybody thinks that these developments are going and the town will be awash in money. So, oh, we have this money, we can spend it. And I think that there's two aspects to that. First is, is cost, as you mentioned with the fire marshal inspections, I always thought we got paid when we did manual. We don't. So you have certain town costs in order to just support the units that are coming in. And that's even before you calculate how many additional children are going into the schools and what the potential costs there are so that it's not that all of a sudden we, our grand list went up and we're getting all this revenue. It's.
It's not free revenue, too.
Not revenue.
There's some costs there that people aren't quite understanding and therefore shouldn't be so quick to spend that revenue.
Yeah, and we're still ahead of the game. You know, it's still positive, but there are, you know, just even things like the training that we should be providing for the the volunteer firefighters because we're going to have these elevators. You know, not quite sure yet what kind of an impact there might be on the Post with that many more lives in town. You know, what might that do to their call volume? And what might the challenges be in a five-story residential building? So it's not.
And we're looking at getting a new ladder truck because we need something that.
No.
Can we? No, I thought we were.
No.
There's just one truck that does better going inside than better outside.
Yeah.
But they already know which ones are what.
Yeah, it's it's more about them working together, but.
Got it.
Yeah, but it is, you know.
So Kate, you'll do a little chart for us?
Yeah, we'll do some comparisons for you and get them to you as soon as we can.
And so remind us, what are the next steps for us for budget conversations?
Conversations, deliberation. You're meeting Tuesday night. You will have some business to do, but you also have review of the budget on the agenda. And then you're scheduled to meet again Wednesday night. We have you scheduled for a vote on Wednesday night. You know, you could add another special meeting. We would just need 24 hours' notice. So like if on Tuesday you felt you were going to need two more nights, you know, we could just schedule another one.
Okay.
When does it have to be voted on?
Well, you know, we need time internally to prepare for delivering it to the Board of Finance.
Yeah.
And.
When does that vote in front of them?
It goes in front of them the first Tuesday, which I think is the first, isn't it?
Of March.
No, seventh, okay, yes, so, you know, a little bit of time. You know, without printing it, it helps, but we still have to. You know, all the things that you see in there with the commentary and all, that takes time.
So I just went back and did it a different way. Without debt service and taking out the transfer to reserve, you're up 4.9%.
Okay.
If you ever go really play around, you can create these graphs.
Is that just the expense side, the forecast?
Yeah, that's the expense side, but it's not the net.
Yeah, because one of the other things I think is important in presenting this is the net. Because, you know, the Board of Ed does a net because they have certain revenues going in, even though the revenues go to reduce the amount that needs to be raised from taxes, it is offsetting some of the expenses that is occurring. So I have always showed what the Board of Ed, what your expenses are, but also what your net expenses are. Because I think if your revenues also went up by some amount, then the increase isn't 5%, I'm just saying.
Well, the increase in the mill rate is not, yeah.
Well, the mill rate I never worry about because there's a whole bunch of things with frozen grand, the extra funds that we get from that, the amount of two mil, and some other things, how we bond things and other things like that will reduce. But the real net increase, some of what you're doing, the mill rate's revenue, and that should be looked at as well.
Well, I think that's why you have kind of the total picture that's got all the individual components from the top revenue all the way down to the mill rate.
Yeah.
And you could look at each one of them. You could do little subtotals, you could do all of that, but you always have the taxpayer in mind and you can do whatever you want to look at in terms of efficiency or particular decisions or all of that stuff, so we'll have that.
John, maybe it would be good if Kate puts something together and then instead of sending it to all of us, she sends it to you first.
Yeah, so, well, absolutely, I'll do that. The Board of Finance spreadsheet, the way that works, has all that, that summary's quite easy from that. That would allow us to look at all those components and it's on a nice page, so we'll sit that around. They're going to want it anyway, so.
Yeah, it has to be adjusted, though, because we have to change the way it shows capital based on Kate's recommendation, so that's why it's not updated yet.
Yeah, not a problem, and I'm happy to help you guys or look at it if you'd like.
Good?
Yeah.
Well done, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, meeting is adjourned.